Please note that the meeting will be streamed and we post that video after the meeting has concluded. Is there any disclosure of the community or interest or general nature there? Okay, seeing none, I am seeking counsel with consensus to have an add-on for this meeting. And it is in regards to the connecting needs funding that we will need to have a desiderable resolution from council for that one to proceed with the connecting needs funding application. So is there any objection to that? Not when we're going to receive money.
That's right.
I didn't think they're with me, but I needed to ask. Okay, so we'll have that add-on item as G. Okay, we have no public hearing this evening and we have no delegations. So I'm looking forward to the question period. Are there any questions about the current agenda? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. So we have a motion moved by Council Foster seconded by Council Ducey that items A1 through F7 are considered to contain part one consent agenda. So I'll open up the floor for the discussion and I'll actually ask if there's any requests to sever any. Okay, so we will continue through the items. We have the adopter minutes. We have a special meeting of council on May 14th. We have the regular meeting of council, May 14th, and the special meeting of council following that on May 14th as well. Any items to note? Okay, boarding committee reports, there were none. Any matters arising from in-camera session, there were none. And there is no business arising from any of the board committees. Okay, so we'll move on to bylaws and resolution. We have the confirmatory bylaw E1, that's standard. And reports. Again, if you have any comments on any of the reports, just tell me as I go through them. And we'll probably address anything from the report. So F1 is the major services departmental report of 2019. F2 is the public works departmental report for 2019. Okay, we'll just start, we'll start with the.
I noticed there were a couple of pieces of equipment for our service. I was just wondering for how long. Three of them. Two graders and a. And maybe we could just ask the staff to provide their draft at the meeting. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions about that report? Because I saw three hands go up. Yes, Councilor.
There was some complaints regarding speaker over Clear Lake Drive. I was just wondering if that was resolved? Or being one of the two?
Okay, so can we ask or can we just back on that? If there's anything that you need to clarify in terms of doing that. With, yeah, you're simply one of those. What were your questions?
What was the question?
Yeah, what was your question?
The question was, was someone sent them to have a look at the assessment situation?
Okay.
Then what was done?
Then what was done?
Okay, Councilor Ducey, do you have anything to say?
No, pretty much the same, so I'm good with that. Thank you.
F3 is our economic development department report as of March and April 2019. Okay, F4 is the fire department report for 2019. Yes, Councilor Foster.
I know we did a fair number of alarms for carbon monoxide, false alarms. I was just wondering if I could get a copy of the policy, town policy, if we have relating to false alarms. Okay, just to see what it says.
Okay. The last topic to be circulated to all of council. Any other questions or comments? Okay, F5 is the public health subrare and district meeting, minute April 18th, 2019. F6 is the mandatory and subrare district services board meeting minutes, February 25th. And F7 is the portfolio of watch for hills and mistletoe association meeting report out of May 6th, 2019. Okay, seeing any other questions or comments? I will call motion to accept the consent agenda. So on favor. Okay, motion is carried. Okay, now we're moving on to our regular agenda items. So agenda item G1. This is moved by Council Malat and seconded by Council Ducey. It resolve that, number one, this head plan control agreement between corporation and the town, that's the role of the mine board. Order of 291 James Street be accepted and a bylaw be prepared to adopt. Be prepared to adopt the agreement. And number two, council waive the requirement for deposit slash security. So I'll leave the floor to discussion or questions. It was moved by Council Malat, who also had the first right to speak on this.
Everything looks good, like through the whole site plan, everything looks all in order.
Okay, Council Ducey, you second the motion?
Yes. No, I have nothing for this.
Okay, Councilor Foster?
I just had, I have a bit of a problem with waiving the requirement for deposit security because that's something we require for everybody, building the hospital, building the fire hall, schools, whatever is done in the community. And I gather that is partly in case a project gets started and for whatever reason it can't be finished. And now the town will have, would have to deal with maybe a building that's partly constructed, okay, and can't be finished. So the town ends up being on the hook for that. So I think that's a standard clause, okay, that's in there. You know, I really applied no, someone taking the risk to put in a car wash, okay, and develop the business. I'm going to suggest that we consider not waiving it, but reducing it to make sure that if, for some reason, and I'm sure that Mr. Bullitt is fully intending to complete what he start, but sometimes the circumstances behind, beyond your control coming to play and it can't, it can't be done. That we maybe instead of a, I think normally the deposit requires, is what, half of 50% or 100% of the?
It's usually, well, depending, it's usually 50% of of the development, you know, for paving, stormwater, infrastructures.
I just suggest.
That can, it's really up to council.
Yeah. And what my concern is not so much that we, we forego this, but then we start setting some precedents, okay? Then you've got an A and W that's maybe starting up and they want the same thing. I like to see some nominal amount in there as a, as a security to at least be able to handle the costs. It doesn't have to be 50%, 10% or $20,000 or something like that in case something happens and they can't go ahead. And that, and it's not so much, I'm worried about this right here, but it's setting the precedence, okay? And will they start doing that and just open the door for, for everybody else?
Yes, Councilor Van Oostman? I agree with that, Councilor Foster, that was my concern. I don't want to set any precedent. I don't have an objection though to lowering the, the deposit or security as long as anyone else that approaches us and asks are treated the same way.
Councilor Ducey? Do you have any comment? So if we, if we wish to change the item number two about leaving the requirement, and I do agree with that. I am concerned about people leaving the requirement for the quality of security. I need a motion to amend this motion. And then we will vote on the amendments and then we vote on the entire motion. So we have some here that is willing to make a motion to amend this.
I'll make a motion to amend, leave the first part of the room. And the second part of item two, council require a security deposit of, let's say, $25,000.
Okay.
Okay, it's not, it's, it could be a letter, security, doesn't have to be cash in hand, but just, just to provide provision in case something goes wrong.
Okay, so council requires $25,000 deposit
And that's a little less than 10% of the total project cost. But maybe probably cover just mainly a car and building if it's required.
Okay, so I need, do I need signatures or initials?
Yeah.
On this, from Council Foster and from the second. The movement secondary to the whole connection. So we, we, we turn a second for the amendment. Okay, so we have, anyone move for the second to just, just just call? So Alex brings it out with the motion that was suggested as number two. Item says council requires $5,000 deposit slash security. So moved by Council Foster. And I need a second for that amendment, Councilor Van Oostman? Okay, so yeah, and is there any other discussion about the $25,000?
That ledger is a letter of security.
Well, that'll be part of this, okay.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be money they give us. It can guarantee that if something goes wrong, the town can draw from that to, to offset any costs.
Yeah. Okay, so we're going to vote just on the amendment only. So all in favor of the amendments? Okay, so that is carried. So now we're on the entire motion. So I'll just read the whole motion again. The site plan control agreement between the corporation and the town of Escondola and Miami, order 291 James Street be accepted and a bylaw be prepared to adopt the agreement. And two, council requires a $25,000 secure deposit slash security. Any other comments on this motion? Okay, all in favor? Okay, so that motion is carried. Okay, item G2, we have a recommendation regarding meeting management streaming software. It is moved by Council Malat and seconded by Council Ducey. It resolve that the town of Escondola entered into a treaty contract in the amount of $9,950 per year with East Farm Software and Mark Montary to provide the following services. Video streaming, staff report approval of work quotes in agenda preparation, internet publishing of AODA compliance agendas, meetings and video. Citizen engagement including deal sixty eight conflict interest registry support and meeting management including recording of minutes, both conflict interest containing the minutes to be legal. So I'll open up the floor for discussion on that. Councilor Van Oostman?
How many quotes did you receive altogether? How many other things did you ask her, quotes?
This was the only one because they came forward through AMO.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so I mean, we don't have your doctors tonight.
This, this company, sorry, was recommended by AMO?
Yeah, they have a partnership with AMO. So, yeah, they came forward, I guess, with really.
Councilor Foster?
I think they, based on what I read there, it looks like they, they they developed a partnership that they owned so that they could provide this type of software to smaller and medium-sized communities who couldn't otherwise afford it.
One of the other things I will mention is I, and I look at the council meetings for the municipality that uses it. And what we will need is the videos are actually. So if you wanted to look at just a specific agenda item, you can click on that agenda item and the video pass forwards to that agenda video. So you don't have to sit there and watch an hour-long council meeting to see what is happening.
I thought that was cool. The other thing though is there's a camera that has to come with this and of course, and the module that for the other cameras or whatever they have, right? What was the, like, do we have to pay for that camera?
So we could use this camera.
We could use that one?
Yeah, or, or go back to the previous one, whatever council wants. Yeah, we, we're still, we have to deal with the camera and audio issues. So this is more just the streaming of it and, and the meeting management.
Well, because we certainly have a problem with the, with the video. And we have a problem with hearing everyone as well. I, I don't know if we could put in some sort of a, a hub to take, to take on more microphones so that we're all heard equally, the same way. And if we could, that'd be great, and I believe we can, there, there is provisions for that. Now, I'm not so sure about the owl there. I sometimes I just wonder if the one up there wasn't better, you know? It's just, it's not flying all the way around, it's, I don't know. It just seems a little bit better to me. Because then everybody's always seen talking whether from up there or from here. And half the time, the sound stays in the one area, then you don't see the other person talking at all. Sometimes there's a woman talking and a man's voice is there. So I don't, I don't know. I guess I, I would like this, I really do. I'd like to have something better than we have right now, though. I mean, for, for this part, yes, I, I think this is good.
Okay. So then, then it's something that we could request further investigation through the camera system because this motion going with this streaming is just about the streaming and the agenda part.
It really means something to me though because I, if we're not going to go further with this, I'd rather not spend $10,000. That's my problem. So if we're prepared to go a little bit further and can do it right, then by all means, I'm interested.
Okay, do we hear any other cancers in this? Councilor Foster, sorry, I thought I came first.
Okay, I think it's a good idea, first of all. We want to put tools into staff's hands that, that yeah, make their work more effective, okay? And that, so we don't waste time doing things that, that could be better used and other things. So just by doing that, we're going to, you know, we don't necessarily save money because you're still paying for staff position, but those people are able to take on other tasks. And that provides value to the community. To be able to hit an agenda item and take you to the area of the backup materials is nice. And for the public, it's also nice to be able to walk on an agenda item. And if you're not interested in some of the other stuff, you can walk onto the agenda and then it'll take you to an area of the video that, which is a discussion. So I think it's money well spent, okay? I do agree with Ray in that it would be nice to make the video better, okay? And part of the, part of what we have to do with this is to get a different microphone. It works under a different frequency, I believe, that's what I read. So hopefully that will take care of parts of that, okay? And we're sort of captive in that we have a fairly small room here. Really, we should have sort of a semicircular chair that isn't being used as a, as a corridor. So, you know, the other part of it, and I don't know what we can, can't do. It would be nice if we could do that. But that doesn't preclude us from going to do this and then improving the video some more.
Councilor Ducey?
Fundamentally, I agree with this. We have to improve transparency. Some of this I don't understand. Conflict of interest, registry support, or how we put out our agendas. But it's a, it's still a, you know, a deal of moving trial. And I think it's a good idea, especially if we pay for it out of efficiency funds.
Councilor Van Oostman?
The only other thing I would add is, this is new and we are all, yes, looking at moving forward. But this is a three-year contract. I would feel a lot better with a one-year and see how things go and extend it if everything is working good. But I mean, we don't know, this is all new for us too. And we don't know what we could be coming into later on. So I would more err on a one-year with the option for a renewal. I just, I just don't know these people, I don't know what all we're going to get. And I don't like to spend an extra $20,000 when we don't know how satisfied we're going to be.
Okay, Councilor Ducey?
I believe this would be a more expensive venture if, if it wasn't that, I think this is why the three-year contract?
Yeah. They wouldn't guarantee that that would be the phrase, if we only wanted to do a one-year contract.
Okay.
I would say they wouldn't be as willing to look for training.
Yeah, there's cases in training as well.
And that's about $10,000 there too. So they're, they're writing off all these startup fees, okay?
Eighty-five hundred dollars.
A little longer contract.
Yeah.
Any other discussion items? Is there a, is there a way that, any wording in the contract simply would be sent via, but if we didn't like it, we could back out of it?
I'm sure that there would be.
I can see it.
Okay, so we can definitely, I'm sure that there would be an option to get it if they didn't want to use it anymore. It's just there might be a penalty that would exist.
Okay.
Okay, I will call a motion, all in favor? Okay, getting carried. Okay, item G2, it was moved by Council Ducey, I mean, Council Ducey. It resolve that council was the one that was sending the group, you know? Council question, going in the news. So Ray, do you remember, do you want to comment on this motion?
I have not.
Okay, Ken?
No, thank you.
Any other comments, Councilor Van Oostman?
Yeah, I do, I mean, I guess I'm coming from a real small place. So when I look at this here bid tender, it's way over the materiality guideline. And all we are given is a very small snapshot of what it is that they are offering us. Like, we don't know how many bids there were, if the bids were close, or anything else about them. We don't know why this here one, he said, was within the budget. Is there other bids that were lower or similar? Like, I have absolutely no idea.
If that's in the staff report, Councilor Van Oostman? And so it says that gravel tender, I'll answer some of your questions. The gravel tender was sent out to suppliers only to have been on the, on that supplied gravel. And wholesale, given below is good. Okay, okay, so that information was provided in the background?
I didn't read that part, I apologize.
That's, that's fine, I just, but like the information that we're looking for was there.
I understand there's dummy bid that
Yeah.
That the lowest bid was below what we were expecting it might be.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, I'll call a motion, all in favor? Okay, the motion is carried. Okay, item four is there is no motion with this. It is basically for the purposes of providing direction to staff on where this is. And this is regarding strategic planning. So we had Brian Stroh present the framework for strategic plan on the second. And we have included in our process what the strategic planning process felt like for last time. Council read through this, which was 2012. There is returns of reference for the corporate team, that's also in our agenda panel. So basically, I opened up the floor for discussion in terms of where is the, this going, strategic planning process going, so that we may give staff some direction. Any comments, Councilor Foster?
Yeah, I reviewed a few of the strategic plans from the community, okay? And F7 has a very detailed strategic plan. They created a strategic plan steering committee, okay? Which is, I'll call it similar to this committee. They had staff, council, and residents on it. Last time around, we had this staff and, and council, okay? I'm just reading from what I saw there. Okay, maybe I'm misinterpreting.
Yeah, I'll, like, if they have a priority, one of the council.
Yeah. So they actually had 18 people on their committee. They had three members in the council, including their number of staff, and I couldn't tell by reading the list who they were. But they also indicated that they added a couple residents and, and their group was to steer the, steer that process through. And I think that is something we should do, okay? How we design that thing, that committee, you know, thing. They did online surveys, they did focus groups. They had interviews with municipal officials and stakeholders. They had public consultation. They had environmental scans where they looked at their social and economic snapshots, economic and social forces, SWAD analysis, okay? A bunch of stuff, but the steering committee started that and then they, if they decided they needed a focus group to discuss a particular aspect of the plan, and that's, they then made a recommendation to make that happen. So I think what we should do is start by creating a steering committee of some sort, whether we use wording that we had from the last time. And I think it should include a couple, a few residents.
Okay, I'll comment on that, the process that you described, the capacity we went through, things that it was quite large in terms of how they approach that. We have to be cognizant that we don't have a lot of staff available to work on this approach. We have to be cognizant of that. There were the laws.
Call that in.
Can we please take it?
Sorry, I turned it off, I don't know why I didn't turn it off.
Okay, thank you. So we Okay, thank you, um, so we, uh, what's my due date?
We don't have a lot of people.
Yeah, we don't have a lot of staff, we're in that, uh, the other thing is, what we did last time is we used staff and council to set the framework in terms of where we wanted the strategic planning to focus on, and then we took that entire process and we opened it up to the public. And at those couple consultation questions, I would say the one that I was at, we probably had about twenty-five to thirty people involved in that. Uh, and the one, the first one, that I went in with him because it was during the day, was also that many people attending that one. And it was actually the residents in the ways of the community that, within the frame, framework of the strategic plan, came up with suggestions of what they wanted to see accomplished, and then from there, they would develop priorities of the things that were to go. So it was a very, very open process, council didn't prescribe anything in that strategic plan, they left it, and the majority of that was left up to residents. Since here the executive summary that also, over five hundred and fifty people were in the Oracle poll, and, um, that was who that they, which they were like, compared to. Yep, so, and we, we said we consulted with council management and staff. This is the one, two thousand. Anyway, there's all kinds of things we can do to alleviate pressure off staff, but do it as often as we can. Yeah, and it was, and it was, uh, it was positive, I mean, we had a very positive, kind of, we had a lot of positive feedback from residents. Because their input was highly valued, um, and it was, it was taken into the plan, it was their ideas that we wanted to see. It was nice if you include too many people, I think, in the framework setup of what the strategic plan is going to encompass. I think if we said too many, uh, people in that, it becomes a little bit harder to accomplish that as a task. That would be my concern, and every step of the strategic planning process could be brought back to council to review at all, all of the different stages.
And I'm not suggesting eighteen people, because Capuskeye is a much larger community, but
Right.
I think we should have three people from, count of two people plus the mayor on that, some staff, and I still think we should add a couple residents, it would be a huge group, because you're not gonna have all staff on there, you'd maybe have the managers on there.
Any other, um, discussion items? Yes, I think it should be, um, uh, from all walks of life, senior, um, the youth be involved in this, and then just, you know?
Those native.
All of each groups, so that they can have their book too. Instead of just like, you know, if you, if you invite the public, you're really, you have one, most likely just one major have been there coming forward, we should talk to, um, what's the committee, like, the recreational committee? That would be yours, now services?
We should start, no, it's not one.
Oh, they actually, they should be, they should be included, like, maybe a member from that group, like. Okay, so, um, the corporate team right now, we'll talk about this, on the corporate team right now, it includes a mayor, deputy mayor, clerk, uh, treasurer, administrator, two non-union staff. Uh, and a representative from each group, so we have two non-union staff, two union staff, um, the clerk, and I was the clerk treasurer administrator, the commission title, the mayor deputy mayor. So we can take a look at modifying that, if we're interested in, if we're not, and adding community residents. Uh, but we have to come up with the direction that we want to get to staff at this point in time. Okay, so let's take a look at their, their questions, one at a time, on, on the first staff report. And number one is the contract of the completion of the strategic plan, that we require in our team, estimates would be approximately thirty to fifty thousand dollars. Uh, that's kind of the first direction that we're looking for, which basically means we would have somebody come in and help get this through out of this process, um, again, that funding could be from the, um, efficiency funding, okay, that could be one area that we're drawing that, that money from, um, so let's talk about that issue.
I don't think we should spend that type of money there, we've already got a strategic plan, and a lot of it looks reasonable.
Okay.
Okay, uh, to move it forward though, okay, uh, it's gonna take some effort, okay, so we're gonna probably have to hire, bring in some other resources, if nothing more than do update the statistics on the community from, from stats Canada or some other thing to put it in perspective. But to go out and hire someone great from scratch, bring in a group, and that, that's what Capuskeye did, okay, so they probably gave it to them to do what they did. Uh, I don't think it's necessary at this point in time, but we, but we will have to spend some money because staff, I don't believe they have the time to go through and even update the statistics of the plan.
Okay, so in the analysis section, um, landback has said that they were eligible at a much lower cost, that could be the source of the extra assistance that we need.
I would agree with that.
Okay, I, I am in agreement with the Council Foster that I don't think we're going to spend fifty thousand dollars. Uh, we do have an existing framework, and we can always work with that framework, we're just taking into consideration a slight change to that. So, landback?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I see some consensus about landback, the services being used. No to going outside for a complete RFP, okay. So Oracle poll, it's been completed in previous years, so look at community satisfaction, a lot of information, number, what was the number that you came up with?
Five hundred and sixty-two.
I think it was about a half.
Yeah, and it's actually already in the budget?
Yeah.
Okay, so yes to that. Um, there are changes to the composition of the corporate team. The last time the corporate team started with the framework, that had provided the framework, and worked inside of that, and from what I'm hearing, it looks like that's when we, we may want to complete the residents.
Yeah.
Um, and maybe not rename it completely, corporate team, um, and put out a call to residents in order to, due to, uh, looking for people from the other committees?
Yeah, sounds good.
Okay, I see it's a three-nones.
Yeah.
Four, okay, um.
And we don't need a lot of them, that two, two or three might be useful, provide us a little different perspective. As we get deeper into it, and start looking further into it, we may have to go to recreation committee to talk about, and get more input. But, uh, I, this is just to set some general direction and.
Yeah, well, we do have two non-union staff, right, so they could be that, the recreation, make sure we know who was in that area. Now, potentially it could be on here, we could have some other works, uh, on here as well, so we have that those areas covered, but then there are always the other ones, which are staff. Okay, I, I'll ask, two or three? For community residents on the team?
I would say three.
Three? Looking for diverse group?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, do we want to do it like we've done, put it out there, put the advertisement out there for people to explain our interest, and then we take a look at the people that we're hiring?
Yeah.
Okay, um. So number four is how council would, it sounds like we would contact landback, um, ask for their services, and what kind when required or as required, and staff can make that determination where they may need the extra assistance or support in certain parts of this. Um, we will continue to utilize the Oracle poll. And we would like to advertise for community residents on this condition. Okay, so we want to make a motion? Yeah.
Are we adding one other person from council?
I'm ready to do that.
Okay, we can add one other person from council. Okay, give me a minute, and I will write up a motion, and then I'll need a moment a second to report it. Okay, so I have a motion, it reads, uh, be resolved that landback be used to provide assistance to the strategic planning process. And number two, the work openly conducted, um, number three, advertisements be sent out for three additional community residents to participate in the strategic planning process. And four, the addition of one council to the corporate team, so any warning changes? Okay, any concerns from staff, uh, do you need any other information in terms of the Oracle poll, or do you need to see more?
Well, we, what we've done in the past is we circulate the previous, you know, previous Oracle poll, ask for any input from board managers on questions, ask for input from council on any specific areas, and then we work back and forth with.
Okay, so, so just that we, that we're gonna conduct it, we'll set that, we'll see the process in action, um. And, and in terms of the addition to one council in the corporate team, do we want to elect a council now, or is there anybody that's interested in sitting in that position?
It would depend on when you're gonna meet and that, so probably waiting until.
I'm guessing it'll be after three P M, on any given day.
Well, I know, uh, council and Malat works, and I don't want to overly commit right now, so I would rather, if you don't mind waiting and leaving that position open, see who, unless somebody else is certainly taking that hand.
Councilor Dukosie, Councilor Dukosie, Councilor Malat, what are your feelings, like, over any of you?
I'd like to know when it was, when, you know, when the time draws a little closer. Cause I, busy.
But once we, once we put it out to the public, residents does seem to be a better idea to, depending on, on who is selected?
Yeah.
Um, you know, because we try to coordinate and discuss.
Okay, so I will add to the number four, the addition of one council to the corporate team to be determined. Okay, so I will need a moment a second for this. Okay, so, who was my council sponsor, same as my council due for, after we did the whole thing again, be resolved that landback be used to provide assistance for work in strategic planning across a proper basis. Two, the Oracle poll be conducted, three, advertisements be sent out for three additional community residents to participate in the strategic planning process. And four, the addition of one council to the corporate team to determine. Okay, call in favor? Okay, item G five, but we don't have any background material on this, but this is a discussion about, in terms of who we're using, what we're doing, so I'm gonna ask our C E O to provide some instruction on this.
I think you surprised her.
I think I might have surprised her, yeah, um, because it's, it's here, we don't have, it's, it's municipal law zone for discussion. Did you have a council, correct, to say and ask? Right, I know, I don't have those things specific. Right, and I know we had talked about the four, the forms that we were using, and why we were using which firms for that, and I thought maybe we were prepared agreements, but, but I'm not sure if that was what was, okay, ask. Let's turn this over to Councilor Dukosie.
Yes, I put that in there, uh, just for the fact that we do need a municipal law firm to represent the town. Uh, we're going through a lot of policies, um, that, uh, some language we shouldn't be interpreting, it's legal language, and that we have questions, and we have questions, if any problems have come up, we should have a firm, I think our contract is up with Wishart, and I thought I'd bring the council and see what the thoughts were.
Uh, okay, so that's where I was asking for some, some information from our C E O, because we do have different lawyers that we use from different circumstances because of their area of specialty. Right, we have some lawyers that are specialists in land use and land planning, so if there's something that needs to go, we send it out to one lawyer. We've used a different lawyer for the last integrity commissioner investigation, we use a different lawyer to handle all of that, with Wishart Law Group. We use other lawyers in terms of other H R issues, so we, there's no one lawyer that we will ever find that will do the, oh. Um, because they all have areas of specialty, our integrity commissioner, again, is another lawyer that specializes just in protection and mission investigations. We can however, ask staff to look for a law firm that does have lots of different specialists in different areas, so we could consolidate all of that into one legal practice, but again, most of that isn't towards, we use a one lawyer. So, so if we wanted, like, if we want to, we could ask staff to prepare a report in terms of what are potential law firms that they provide this single-source, multi-
Functional lawyer.
Or a single lawyer.
Yeah. Um.
That may be difficult, because as you say, you know, you do some for land planning or corporate services, or you see a number of lawyers, we don't even see that the staff use, uh, but we've always had a municipal lawyer who works in municipal law.
Yeah, that's true.
And that's, um, I think important to, like, council. A firm, or it could be part of another firm who has a specialty or someone in municipal law, who will hence, who will serve the town this law, if I have a problem, I'll get an answer, if you have a problem, the staff has a problem, they get an answer.
Right, um, no, I still think we have to use different lawyers from time to time, can you correct?
We have.
Yeah.
For sure.
But, but just kind of on a, on a ad hoc, as needed basis, have we always had the same quote municipal lawyer?
No, not really, um. I mean, uh, you know, we, we had Wishart for the one-year term, uh, we did, there's been years where we haven't had anyone. Um, you know, we had, uh, we've seen block for a period of time, uh, we were a number of years without anyone, uh, we did have
We did have our dean at one time. So it's kind of been off and on, just as the new kind of comes up, you know. We could do an RFP if the council is interested in that, but that would tend to come with a retainer. It's lost.
So I'm not sure where we want to take this in terms of going forward. Counselor Van Alstine, do you want to say something?
Well, I agree with councillor, just let's see, I think with all the policies and everything we're going through right now, it wouldn't hurt for us to have some legal counsel on the, on the retainer.
Okay, is there a desire for, to request staff to prepare an RFP and send it out?
Yes, I would say, sorry.
There's, okay, so there's, I would say two so far that we've heard from. Counselor Foster, counsel Dukor, counsel why?
I don't have a problem asking staff to prepare a report, and seeing what they recommend, what they think we should do.
Okay.
No. That's a reasonable thing to do, but then, then out of that, we could turn around and solicit, depending on what we thought of the staff report, we could go forward and assert here, and we could then solicit some, some retainer costs or other costs associated with that.
So are you suggesting that we direct staff to move forward to just give us a staff report in terms of who we're using, under what conditions we use?
Yeah, and make a recommendation of how we might be able to consolidate that and utilize that.
Okay.
If...
We see some consensus among you?
Yep.
Okay, so staff production? So you can bring that to corporate services to review, and then... Okay, perfect. Okay, so item G6, recommendation regarding maintaining the Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund. We do have a motion moved by councillor Van Alstine, seconded by councillor Dukor. Being resolved that council for the town thus and all endorses the letter addressed to Minister of Finance from the town of Oau regarding the ONPF, and furthermore, that, sorry, I should say Ontario Municipal Partnership Fund, and furthermore, that copies of this resolution be sent to Minister of Finance, making that an MTP and a PMP. So open for discussion?
We've got another writer today, a meeting, it was another community, and I kind of liked what they did there too. Maybe we could add their name to the list. I can't remember who it was there now.
There are a couple. Okay, so we can, we can modify this motion to send our motion back to those communities and have the same motion, if that's all. Okay.
I think the, the last, the motion I saw today from one of the communities had some, said, look, they liked some things that were in the act, but they didn't like some other things, and, and they wanted to make sure that the province have a fulsome, I forget the words they used, discussion with the, with the communities before they proceeded with the act.
Yeah.
Yes, can we just propose, I don't, I don't imagine that, I'm sure we've moved on, we've now already had a question to review that too, because it might be important to include those things. I'm not sure. I mean, we could pass this one and then bring the other one, or we can hold off on this one and, and review that, I'm not sure.
I didn't see a date on it.
Plus, it's contentious.
Like, an ending, it was just a, when we received it. So we got one today, I say, I remember reading one today, and I opened it up and I took a quick look at it, and actually, it looked like it was a nice approach there to ask the problems. Okay, it wasn't all, you don't like this, don't like that, it said, we don't like this aspect, but we do like some other aspects in the act. Please consult the community before you proceed with the bill.
Yeah, this one is that the town runner was recommending that the ONPF maintain that not less than its current level, third funding level. So that's essentially what this one is asking for.
Maybe I'm confusing.
That's the one I did.
I'm confusing this with Bill 68, sorry.
Yeah, because there was another one.
Yeah, okay, I'm sorry.
But this one is just the recommendation that the ONPF, he made to that not...
Yeah, look at that. Okay, I don't, I know, I'm not saying...
Okay, but what about circulating this to anyone else? Just so, so far, this resolution is sent to the Minister of Finance, by NPA and PMP, which is typically where these are, are searched for. Okay, all in favor? The motion's good. Okay, I'm trying to keep down the people to vote up here. Okay, and next item on the agenda is item G7, which is the 41 budget variance report. Okay, so this is item for information. If you look somewhere, different departments, so here we are, different than budgeting. Okay, any questions or comments?
I like the way you presented this, Cynthia, it was really nice. The only thing I would like to see added would be the 2018 actuals. Other than that, this is just perfect for what I would like. And your notes to the financials explained, I had gone through and highlighted a few that your notes could be financial, are answering just what I had questions on.
Hey, this, this distribution of this report is something that does come up quarterly now. We have an interesting policy that has been included in our reports, and basically, what we're looking at, the reports come out quarterly each year, with the March 31st, June 30th, September 30th, and December 31st.
If I was to look at it, if you could see that again?
That's the proposal.
Oh, I see, okay.
So like, because our current policy is included, and it's item 70, I'm pretty close.
I see, okay, thank you.
Hey, any other questions or comments on the, the budget variance report?
I have one other, I see I'm going to control, that we are definitely way, way over budget, which is understandable with all the snow we have. So my question is this, how are we going to control our costs for the other seven months of the year? We spent an awful lot on here. Are there items that we are not going to spend money on, or, because we were, geez...
Well, that's, I mean, yes, I mean, the problem with the report is that the year to date, the budget year to date, it's just a formula, so it takes three twelfths of the, the annual budget.
Okay.
So, you know, for the next quarter, and even the quarter after that, up till September 30th, we're not going to be spending in that category, right? But the budget is going to allocate quarterly.
Okay.
So, you know, we spent $257 out of the pool, with a total of $112,000.
Yeah.
So there's still 154, I guess, to get us through November and December.
Okay, so the department figures that that's going to be enough to cover it through?
Well, we never know how much snow we're going to get, but then we also have the winter maintenance reserve too, to offset that. And, you know, the benefit of a lot of the labor is internal, so if it's going to winter maintenance, it's not going to a different category.
Okay.
So it's the budgets overall for staffing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It's not a huge area.
Good.
Any other questions? Okay, so there's no motion, this, this information, this is a fairly friendly motion. Okay, our next item, we have a list of motion, item G8. Okay, it's moved by councillor Van Alstine, seconded by councillor Malat. The motion needs to be resolved at the operating budget and period to date actual, which was presented to council for consideration of the May 21st deadline. Furthermore, the format upset summary be similar to the attached documents presented on dollar amounts. Furthermore, that the report be presented on the second regular, meaning February, April, June, September, and November. Furthermore, the report cover the period ending on the last calendar of previous month, assuming that's the last calendar day of the previous month. And furthermore, that the seven report be prepared in both electronic and paper format. Yeah, we're going to move forward to this session.
So this is another notice of motion?
Yeah, so you just go on it, and then the next resolution is adopted, and it's the same motion. Oh, yeah. So the row here, so what I need to clarify about is, the row here is just to accept this as another motion to one each other?
Yeah.
To move it to the next. Okay, so... All in favor? Yeah, you know, just, just looking at the tables.
They're the same.
Okay, so that's original, I'm going to mention, okay, so all in favor to move this on to possible motions. Okay, so that is carrying. Sorry, I thought that was kind of down the last, on the, we answered that question, because I was, we didn't have the motion yet. Okay, so now we have the regular motion, moved by councillor Van Alstine, seconded by councillor Malat, and it says this, basically the same wording, being resolved at the operating budget and period to date actual report, which was presented to council for consideration of May 28th, 2019, regularly canceled. Furthermore, that the format upset summary be similar to the attached documents and presented on dollar amounts. Furthermore, that the report be presented at the second regular council, meaning February, April, June, September, and November. Furthermore, that the report cover the period ending on the last calendar of the previous month. Furthermore, that the said report be prepared in both electronic and paper format. Okay, so open for the discussion. Councillor Van Alstine, this was your next motion?
Yes, I looked at my notice of motion, and what we got as the council summarized, as I said to our CAO, if we had the 2018 actual on this summary as well, that would give me the information that I will be looking for. So the only added thing I would like is one extra report instead of quarterly, I'd like five, and just to have more of an idea where we are on our budgets. Are we within budget, are we over budget? That's what I'm looking at, trying to make sure we're staying within our costs, and if we're starting to go over budget, that we're starting to be proactive and take whatever steps are necessary to bring us back in line with our budgets.
I'm going to ask for your opinion, the, the request from councillor Van Alstine is that we add 2018 year to date, is that possible? Okay, I just wanted to check that.
Yeah. Good.
Yeah, yeah, just to inquire about what other period to review, like, would it be the fall maybe, as we're getting closer to the end of the year? That's at the beginning of the year, I mean, often the budget asks, yeah.
Yeah.
That's why I was meaning, you know, till we pass the budget to do this quarterly report. So, you know, if you want to look at budget actually, or if the end of the year would be a better time to have it, so you have September, and then maybe October, November, and December, or whatever period you'd like.
Okay, I'm flexible in that, I just, you know, I'd like it at least by midsummer to have an idea of where it is a little bit more often, that we're a little bit more on track, so we can really watch what the actual costs are and where our budget amounts are. I, I really, I don't want to see costs going over our budgets and our estimates, I want to stay within that range. Now, I realize that the, the past winter, nobody could have forecast the amount of snow we were going to have, so there's always going to be exceptions, but I'd like to keep this as much in line with our budget as possible.
Councillor Van Alstine, can I, okay, so right now, you're requesting February, and we heard that February often isn't practical because we don't have a past budget.
Yes.
Our policy states March, and this is the last day of calendar, so March, June, September, and December. So that's where we're getting quarterly right now. You have also suggested potentially April, but we're already getting Marches. So is there, do you wish to amend with the motion to change the months that you were requesting?
So if we could have, March would be fine, and June you said would be fine. September, could we add October? Okay. And we can add October. So we can remove February and April, replace it with March, go June, September, October, November.
And I want to read March, December. Now, do you want every month from September 1?
Just the period to date, the rolling totals.
So starting in September, you want every month?
No, I don't think that's said.
She didn't say December, but I'm thinking that...
It's already...
Right. Yeah, but it's already in the policy, but she's requesting extra months, we're going to have to change the policy. Right, so we need to figure out what those months are. So we already have December in the policy, and you're suggesting you don't want a year else?
Yeah, yes, sorry.
Right, so you're asking for September, October, November, December, every month?
Yeah.
Starting with September.
I want to replace February and April with the month of March.
That's already the policy, so it's...
Okay, and June?
Already in the policy, definitely.
Okay, September, October, November, and December.
Do you want monthly?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know it's tight, I would be flexible to omit one of those, I just want to really have a really good handle on where we are budget-wise. I'm open to suggestions.
I'm different, I mean, you know, you're going to have December, so October, or November, and you're not going to find a lot of change anyways, I don't expect in that time period. If you had a, a time period where, you know, there's a lot of winter agents, or even the summer parks stuff going on, I mean, it all depends on the time of the year, right?
So what?
And during the fall, if there's no real...
I'm, like, just from my perspective, I find quarterly is enough. I find that we're getting the budget actual, we know when we are getting motions that require financial commitments, it says what the financial commitment is, whether it's in budget or not, so if it's budgeted, the money is there. I, in terms of putting an extra report on staff, I find that always a, one that I would find challenging, to, to increase anything in the workload for something that we're already getting, and then all of our staff reports have that, that budgeted amount anyways, in terms of anything that we're spending, whether it's in the budget. And if it's not, we are, we are discussing where that's coming from, where that addition money is coming from. So I'll open that up for any other discussion. Councillor Foster?
I think quarterly is good, okay, Nelson, I don't have a problem adding maybe another one at the end of November, okay, because you've gotten until the end of September, and then you've gone two months. Once you get into, the end of the year, you want to, to get a good handle on what you've got, you problem, you may want to wait several months until you've got the audit done, and you've got all the final numbers for the year, so you're actually looking at what reality is, because what I find in these reports is that things like depreciation and other things that we budget aren't locked in until after the end of the year, okay? Or you may have social services that you're paying, and the bill doesn't come, come until the end of the year, so it, it skews these numbers anywhere. You can look at these numbers, but, but what I have found there is you're not able to use them as a real fine-tuned budget grant, okay? Because there's, there's a whole bunch of things like that that go on, we don't charge the depreciation out monthly. And it doesn't mean we can't do that, but it's going to require quite a bit of work to, to update, update the reports to get that level of detail in. and make sure that when we look at something, we're looking at, no, we know that, for example, a complex is going to be depreciated at twenty-one thousand dollars a month, for example. And it would show up, often that doesn't show up there now. The budget, so you get a year-end. There's all kinds of year-end adjustments that go in, and a lot of those aren't known until maybe end of February, March. Would that be fair to say? So, so if you want a year-end report where you don't have all the year-end information, if we don't set the budget till April, then you're not going to get anything for the first quarter, okay? Because you don't have a budget for next year. So you're not, you have nothing to compare to. I think we should just, I think we should just leave it quarterly. Add another day, another report in, in, in December for the end of, that takes us up to the end of November and gives us a pretty good snapshot of what's happened in the year. And just leave it on as a quarterly basis because if we delay the budget like we did this year and last year, because last year we had the fire hall and the, and the PC. So we didn't push that through. We wanted to roll it into the budget. This year, we knew a major change is coming in the grants, okay, potentially. So we held off a little bit. But that means that the budget isn't finalized. You can't generate a budget number to compare yourself to. So I, I think we should just leave it quarterly. Add one more date at the, to cover off November. And when the, when Cynthia's able to generate the reports because we've got finally year-end and we've got the budget and we've got the quarterly, she can then provide us with the variance. Because you can't get a variance to budget if you haven't got the budget in place.
So November, though, to get the information from November, what would be coming December?
Yeah, you'd get it in December, probably the first meeting in December, okay? But that would cover eleven months of the year, which is not that. But even when you look at those numbers, you're going to find that there's lots of things in there that don't really show the true picture because certain things are, are picked up every month. Things like labor and stuff are, okay? Depending on the timing of the, of the payrolls.
Councilor Van Oostein?
I'm not really concerned with amortization or depreciation. I know about that. I'm also not concerned with the ones we have no control over. For example, D S A B in the school board, that we have no control over. They send us a bill whenever it is we pay it. I'm looking at the other departments in the areas, so I am. And I also am looking for the prior-year actuals on there. Those are the ones along with what you gave me would be very good. Your notes are excellent. I followed them through without any problem. But I would like that added on. If the consensus is you want to stay with four months, I can, that's fine. I would have liked an extra one, but I can compromise. But definitely that extra column for the actual. And I realize the ones we have no control over, we have no control over, but we, the one, I'm concerned with our budget we do control.
Which is a management function. Like, they, the managers know.
That's right.
What they have to spend and they, they have spent in an interview. That's over, anything that's, that's going to be a significant variance consequence.
Yeah, well, as Council. Yes. Well, I just want more of an accurate, have an idea where we're going from.
Go to ask for any question?
Yes.
In your motion, you add five, five reports?
Yes.
Would you be satisfied with that, with the, as Bill mentioned, quarter report plus an extra one in November?
Yes, that's perfectly fine.
So the one in November would give us October's information.
Would you want that or would you like at the end of November, do it again in early December? That would get the last two months?
Well, yes, that's true. Getting it early in December would give us more of the year already spent.
Okay, so where's the extra month then?
I thought we had just eliminated it with going quarterly.
Right, but then, Ken's question with the extra month.
Yeah, if you want the extra month, would you like it?
I would.
Quarterly plus one.
Yeah, okay, yes, now I'm like, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're going to be quarterly with the rest of the report, November 30th. And, and that gives us some time to, because December is generally later because there's a lot of invoices we don't get. We wait for months after the end.
So our, but then our December report will be January?
Well, it's still going to be December 31st. So that's the other question I have is that currently it goes to corporate services, but this motion will be asking that it goes to Council on the second Council of the month.
The following month.
The following month, so. I mean, just right now, all the invoices will be in for that period either.
So maybe it would be better to go to January than corporate services? If that's where it's going first, or?
Yeah, but generally what it is, it goes on the corporate services. But I just don't know if Council want to change that to Council or is it going to change corporate?
So typically what happens when it goes to corporate services, corporate services takes a look at it, like, and then it comes back to Council anyways as a report in the consent.
That's fine.
Which are still going to, able to ask questions.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so we need to make some changes to this motion.
Should we do that or should we just bring they, bring their, to corporate services, next corporate services meeting, the policy and make a revision on the policy?
Okay.
Yeah.
So we can, we can defeat this motion, but move it to corporate services. Or do we refer this motion as its?
I would defer this. I would vote to defer this to corporate services.
So that would be my, because then it would be on corporate services. So then it's just on the corporate service agenda as is and then we can just move to corporate services?
Sounds good.
Which you are off.
Yep.
Okay, so we have motion to defer. So the motion is to defer this motion to corporate services and the next corporate services meeting on paper. Okay, so that is deferred. And now I'm no longer confused. Okay, so item G10. And earlier said it was G9 because I just looked at the agenda. So it's actually item G10 and this is the motion about connecting links funding. So moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor Duport. Be resolved at the Council for the town of Esteno that declares that, number one, submitted application weeks to requirement of the empty those connecting links program as described in the program guide. Two, a comprehensive asset management plan including connected links has been completed and publicly posted. Three, the municipality will comply with the conditions that apply to designated connecting links under the Highway Traffic Act to ensure the safe and efficient movement of directional traffic. Number four, the project put forward in the application will be completed and the milestone met as stated in the application. And five, the application is complete and factually accurate. We're going to look forward to any questions on this.
Yes, I could just add, at the time we did the budget, we were anticipating applying for a section of highway from Station Road to Tidale. There was actually more water and sewer work there involved with that project than I first thought. So R B Anderson had recommended we apply for the section down in front of the mall. So from Cala to Tim Hortons, basically. So that is what the application's put there on.
Okay.
And, and the whole highway was done between eighty-three and eighty-five. So it's all non, it's useful like, you know, as a management plan, so.
So we'll call it to Tim Hortons is the new section, Florida. Any other questions? Okay, on paper? Okay, this is Karen. Okay, so correspondence for information only is none. We have public information circulated to Council. If you require the independent public information to know what the school office, if you have something to read in your email, you can ask about two of these things. So there's a Crown Indigenous relationship, relationship Northern Affairs Canada correspondence about the boundaries of the Whitefish River. There is some additional research done on that piece of correspondence. And essentially it is the area, the boundary of the Whitefish River or Precipitation will be extended and there is a not provided in that correspondence. And what that basically becomes is if there's any land that's available commercially for sale, they have the right to buy that. Sorry?
Any land on the open market?
Yes.
Not, not necessarily on.
Oh, sorry, not, any land that will force sale.
Not sure.
They will have, and it's first right to buy that land?
No.
But just it's taking by the land of everybody else and then that land becomes delegated as a Whitefish River. So that was some of the things that we checked and we checked whether it would affect any Crown lands that may impact the door shape and the operations for downtown. There's none of that land that we have for sale, so there's no more concerns there. There's also correspondence about an overshow completion and the opportunity to inspect final environmental study for Mattel Watson Lake Dam projects. We have some correspondence of local league associations from F O P A and a lot of correspondence for the interior works. Now, I'm going to ask Council, this is a recent correspondence. Those correspondence that we have received when we've now raised it. And that was, and it was emailed to all of us regarding that the government reconsidered the e-learning initiative that they want to pursue under the new certification. And I just wondered whether I can kind of get a little bit of consensus from Council that we move that to the next Council agenda. The concern is the government wants to put in that all high school students are mandated that they have to take four courses in the e-learning. And we have a number of people in our municipality and in our current high school scenario that don't even have home phones or cell phones. And to get correspondence to go home, it has to be mailed or someone has to be sent, someone has to go to their house directly. So I am concerned with the teachers, the e-learning, but I'm wondering, because it involves the residents of our community, whether we need to afford that same concern on that the comments were considered or not? We can ask that we put on the next Council agenda. Okay, so directional management, please. At the conference, the, the ruling conference that's scheduled coming out of this email, we know we'll have in August eighteenth, we have a conference. So we'll move on to the mail being Council reports and the law claims. That's a call stop.
For community services, when you drive from along Queensway, past a hospital towards Lee Valley Road, you're going to see lots of dead trees and stuff. And I think we should be looking into what would be required to get that cleaned up a little bit. Because if you've got a fire in there, you've got a lot of fuel in there, that's.
You're not talking like Trump and we're going to go and rape that? You want to straight that?
Okay. There's already dead trees lying in hay and.
Oh, okay.
No, so I think it should be cleaned up a little bit, but I don't know what leeway we have to make that happen.
Is there danger there?
There's no danger of falling, okay? But it just, if you've got a fire in that area, you've got some good fuel. Stoke the fire.
Anyone else?
No, thank you, Karen.
Councilor Van Oostein?
I was at the D S A B meeting. We missed you.
Yes.
It was good. We're still looking at trying to reduce housing costs and vacant land we're trying to get rid of. So we are sell as possible. And I was very impressed with the report from the Integrity Commissioner. I very much appreciated his presentation.
Councilor, you're welcome. Okay, I did make one comment about the Integrity Commissioner. I was concerned about some of the stuff he was saying about it was okay to canvas over Council. That's really, that's still really close to me. If we do email over Council, and that would fall under an investigation, not in the Integrity Commissioner investigation. So I'm a little bit concerned about some of the stuff that he said with that. He did say he was going to look into that and get back to us. But it would kind of fell outside of his area to make comments on initially. I would still recommend that we hear on set of caution that if we're going to talk about a council issue on the agenda, no more than a quarter, right? Because the minute you get a quarter, you're into a close. Even whether it's zero or not. So I suggest we go with the training that we probably have. And stick with that. So the other thing that I would mention is I had an invite to the Alzheimer's Society, it's happening at a lot, for to be awareness and for Alzheimer's. So that's on June 9th. I will be attending that one and on the same day, unfortunate to also participate in a talk about that. So I'll be doing a few walks on the same day, so I don't think we have issues. I don't have any other ones. I did miss the last D S A B meeting. There are some days that I cannot attend because of my other job that I am trying to get to everyone. So that's all I have for, for this month. And again, I'm always open to be contacted for your questions. Last thing we have, we have T U D, so, sorry, Corporate Services meeting, June 4th, five p.m. We have a special meeting.
Did you say?
Corporate Services at five, five o'clock, June 4th. It's usually at four, it should be.
Yeah, it doesn't change.
So our Corporate Services at four o'clock in June 4th. We have a special meeting of Council. Right now, it's saying at six thirty. The radio changed to that, maybe it's a special news service, some policy service, so.
Okay.
Just watch for that information coming out. And then the regular meeting on June 11th and 7th. And the last thing we have is we have a motion to adjourn, moved by Councilor Van Oostein, seconded by Councilor Duport. Be resolved with the regular meeting of Council here by John S P from U P M. Call in favor?
Yes.